I can't get a good afternoon?
Yes, teacher.
Welcome everybody to a point in time at six o'clock. Everybody please rise for the invitation for my pastor Jackson and Father by the place of allegiance.
Father God in the name of Jesus, fathers, once again we come today, Lord, to say thank you. For truly this is the day that you have made. And father, we pray that you let us rejoice and be glad. Father, we ask you to come in this meeting and bless us in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Affirmance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and in this world with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Okay. Um, before we do the approval of General Order, we need to make one or two changes. We had nobody on our delegation members here, we would like to add Clerk of Court, Mr. McLean, for presentation and Mr. William Simon, I'm gonna move him for the presentation to move into new business.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept those changes and add Mr. McLean, Clerk of Court to the agenda and move Mr. William Simon to new business.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All the favors show hands. Thank you. Okay, approval of General Order has been approved, approval of minutes April eighth, regular meeting.
Motion approved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
In discussion, in omission, addition, all the favors show hands. Management been approved. First up, we have Mr. McLean. Mr. Clubber, you got something you need to say first?
I just wanted to say, I just want to introduce our very esteemed Clerk of Court, Ms. Marjorie McLean. Worked very hard and a hard work staff today too, by the way. Please give round of applause.
They look, they look good, they look good.
So, I just wanted to make sure to recognize them. But, Mr. McLean, floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. During my campaign, I talked a lot about building relationships and us getting over the cord. So, this is me introducing you guys to our staff today and giving you an update of what we have accomplished within our first one hundred and twenty-five days. You understand, please. Mr. Williams. Mr. Ford. I want to introduce you all to my staff. The young ladies and gentlemen you see here with the jackets on, these are our bailers. And this is their attire for general sessions. They look a little bit like everybody else during family court. But, this is their attire. These young ladies, this is our Friday wear at some point. But, our family court staff is in the back. I have Miss Courtney Valley over here who leads that operation. We have Miss Cindy, Miss Cindy right here, and then we have Samantha. And we have Christie over here, who's all part of the family court staff. Of course, we have our bees ladies, this is Mrs. Sharon, and this is Mrs. Emma. And then we have Mrs. Tracy Foson, she's in general sessions. And April, who's not with us today, but this is Mrs. One of our bailers was missing. And that's Miss.
That's Miss Vinnie.
Alright, just wanted to introduce you all. Within our first one hundred and twenty-five days, there's probably been out some positive changes and improvements that we've made to the courthouse. One of the things that we've done is we've upgraded our payment systems for our jurors. We no longer use paper checks, we now use prepaid debit cards. These debit cards cost us about seventy-three cent each time we open, which cuts back on us having to worry about when ten dollar checks will clear. We've also increased from ten dollars plus mileage to fifteen dollars flat rate. That's an increase for some people. For those who have mileage as thirty miles out, you know, that's probably a little decrease for them. But, we're going with a flat rate of fifteen dollars now. We've also changed the way we do our jury. Previously, they've been lined up going down the stairwell, but I find that to be a security hazard. So, now we bring them in and we organize them and have them seated one by one next to each other to kind of bring a little bit more organization and also, like I said, to cut back on security issues. We have some local grocery store accounts that cost us a fortune. We closed all those now, you know, we do the things that, like post sales, because you know, we feed our, we can buy snacks for our judges and for our jurors. So, we've saved a lot of money doing that. As far as our security enhancements, all of our bailers now have uniforms and they have badges as well, so they'll be recognized and everybody actually know who they are when they come in to the courthouse instead of looking like everybody else. Mr. Jose Lemon, as you saw a few moments ago, he's a class one officer and he's been honored. So, now that's an added level of security for the courthouse. They have also been equipped with radios and earpieces, so we communicate effectively throughout the courthouse. And Mr. Campbell has partnered with the school district to provide us with some temporary metal detectors until we can get some permanent ones for the courthouse. We've also had installed twenty-nine of our thirty-two cameras in the courthouse. As far as facility improvements, we just thought we've got the judges chambers, one of our judges chambers has been painted and we've updated our furniture that we got with maintenance and they removed all of the old and broken furniture. We're working on our old family courtroom. We're gonna restore that and we're gonna make it into a courtroom for pro-life and for drug court. We also just implemented a dress code in the courtroom. You were thinking that would be common knowledge, but we see all types of things in the courtroom. So, we're now enforcing a dress code, enhance jury participation. So, now, in addition to putting it in a newspaper, the juror list, the juror bank, we've also added it on Facebook now. And we saw it rise from probably about thirty, I don't know how, to probably around sixty or seventy now because everybody's on Facebook. So, the last but not least, I call it a four-year wellness incentive. Every in four years is off, one day a month, you know, just to enjoy for themselves and to have some me time. Because we know we don't get paid a whole lot and I thought that'd be a little, a little something to, you know, keep people happy because we know that, you know, write-off is everything and we have people that are happy they work with. So, thank you, that's our updates.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Kirk, y'all look very good.
Ms. Barrington. You.
Good evening, everyone. Glad to be here and Mr. Cliver and Ms. McLean, McLeod. And all council, I appreciate y'all allowing me this time to be with Mr. Chairman. And I've got a few things to say concerning a new project that we have taken on to help Marlboro County citizens. Marlboro County Treasurer's Office Tax Records Project was only an idea about ten years ago. It was not until county council designated funding annually that the project would come to reality. Little by little, my staff was able to collaborate with a camera and a microphone to take records dating back to the nineteen twenties and have them digitized. The process has been a long one, but it is worthwhile, worth to preserve the history of Marlboro County records. Upon completion of the scanning of the tax records, the next task was to figure out how to make them accessible to the public. I reached out to our county librarian Bobby Groome and asked if there was any way the library could post the records for the public. Naturally, the library is a place where our citizens go for research and it is a lot more accessible to the public. Miss Groome's work on finding a solution to post the files and quickly realized the cost was very, very high and it was a barrier there for us. She then reached out to the state library director, realized the cost was, you know, gonna be very, very much more than what we even expect. So, the state library director, Miss Lisa Aiken, and asked was there any way they could help us. The solutions stated our county, the documents to the statewide document repository. That's what the whole state, to be able to see our records in Marlboro County. And these dated back to nineteen twenty. The solutions saved our county thousands of dollars per year. And the files are now available twenty-four seven from anywhere in the world. I would like to thank all of you supporting this initiative and helping to preserve the history of Marlboro County. My hope is for more and more of our records in the courthouse are digitized and made available to the public. I have a hardworking staff and they have worked with me to help get all these books. You should be ever seeing our books, they're real thick, together along with DT and his group of men. To have get books ready for the people to pick them up from campus. They brought them back and forth and we had them later, we had them microphoned, and then we sent them to the archives in one. So, those records will always be there. There's a few more things that I'd like to say going, and I think we'll be able to get those in motion in the next few weeks. But, I do appreciate what y'all do. Thank you.
Ms. Barrington gave me a little bit of her time and I'd just like to say thank you too to council for supporting initiatives like this, especially in Marlboro County, because a lot of what we do in our library is help our public find answers and solutions to problems. And we're only able to do this by having access to the resources we need. And so, for you guys to kind of step up to the table, we'd really appreciate that even. So, we're able to do this by enhancing, in doing this project, we're able to enhance our local history. Those books are sitting on the shelf in the courthouse, nobody really knows they're there, they don't have access to them. So, when these things are digitized, that streamlines the process for us when somebody walks in the library and says, hey, I'd like some information on my ancestor or that sort of thing. Because essentially, you're sending somebody over to that courthouse, if you say, yeah, I know they're over there, but they're looking for it and they don't pay that. So, having these things digitized really helps us to help our citizens. And so, I just encourage council and other record keepers or departments to continue supporting these sorts of initiatives as well as digitizing more of our local records, especially knowing our courthouse has some of the longest standing records in our state of South Carolina dating back to even prior to the nineteen hundreds. Books by nature, without the right climate and conditions, they're ultimately deteriorating. And so, when that happens, what, we lose our history and we don't want that to happen. So, we're so grateful that it has just been a small part in bringing this project to life. And as Ms. Barrington stated, it wouldn't have happened without collaboration. Your financial contributions, the work of the treasurer office staff, and the willingness of the state library to host the records created a permanent fix for finding tax records in Marlboro County. And so, I have a copy of the link I'd like to give you and I encourage you, if you have a chance, go on there and look at them. It's phenomenal work and I'd like to see more of it. And so, thank you. I have more, please, if anybody wants them, I'll sit them outside.
I wanted to say, there's a letter that's been, uh, tattooed on Chairman Cliver to send to the state library to let them know how much we appreciate what they do for us. It would've been really a financial, not a disaster, but it would be money that we do not have.
About five hundred dollars more if we would have said, I said. And so, there's no way ahead, no limit.
And so, it is very appreciative, these people really work hard and guess what, I think we're gonna want to say it on them. So, that's started out something for all of your other counties and so forth. But, I have this letter here and Mr. Anthony Woods, who's, I've asked him to sign it and Cliver and Bobby Joe and myself. And so, we can present this letter and send it to the state library director. It says, Dear Miss Aiken, on behalf of the citizens of Marlboro County, we would like to extend our sincere appreciation for the state library's work for Marlboro County tax records, South Carolina State Library's digital collections. Over the last ten years, council has committed funds to digitize Marlboro County tax records. The Office of Treasurer, who stores them, visualizes the funds and preserves records dating back to the nineteen twenties. After digitizing the physical copies of these records, we worked with our librarian, Miss Groome, to find a way for those records to be ready, available to citizens. We are so grateful for the commitment to make government documents available to our citizens and for your staff and the library collections department led by Miss Sarah Higgins and for your leadership in providing support to communities across the state. Your work with our local libraries. Please accept this letter as our appreciation for working with our county library and treasurer's office to preserve Marlboro County's records and make them accessible twenty-four seven. Digital, digital collection site. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Susan will take care of the signatures and so forth. And I've got one little other thing I wanted to, I'll cut you off just a minute. I didn't pull the microphone, but I'm sure that's good hearing. Bobby Joe doesn't realize this, but she's just done so much for, not on the treasurer's office, but for Marlboro County and so forth. I just wanted to do something a little for her because all the work, I mean, there's kind of she, we call on her, but people just do not realize that we call on her and the citizens' help. With a lot of things, you know, that she gives and so forth. But, Bobby Joe, would you come up here and let me present this to you? It says Marlboro County Treasurer's Office, thank you Bobby Joe Groome, Marlboro County Library, in appreciation for assisting Marlboro County Treasurer's Office to tax records online and digitize, excuse me, on May the thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, Ms. Barrington, would you allow us to get a picture?
Okay.
Go ahead and get a picture of us.
Alright, thank you.
You come to the center, come in the center. We have room. Get a picture.
Madam Treasurer, thank you so very much for that presentation. And to you, Ms. Groome, thank you for everything that y'all do at the library.
Thank you, thank you, thank y'all for doing.
Mr. Tony McNeil.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Currently, we have forty-five active projects. I'd like to talk about six of the most active. Project Blueberry Hill's food processing project, investment two to ten million dollars, twenty to eighty jobs. It has potential tax revenue impact of two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Project Squeeze is a warehousing project, two to five million dollars, forty jobs. Five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is the potential revenue impact. It would be a lease at the Delta site. Project Paper is a manufacturing project, four hundred to six hundred million dollars, two hundred to three hundred jobs. That has eleven million dollar tax revenue impact. Project Coco is also a manufacturer, seven hundred to eight hundred million dollars, two hundred to four hundred jobs. Potential tax revenue to the county is eighteen million dollars. Project Delaney is two to six billion dollars, eight hundred to a thousand jobs. Potential tax revenue impact to the county is thirty million dollars. And Project Wool, which is another manufacturer, four hundred to sixty million, a hundred to two hundred jobs, has a one point three million dollar impact to the county in terms of tax revenue. I'm happy to announce that all of the projects that we announced thus far are diligently working to achieve. They're committed on investment and number of jobs. So, I see new production lines as I go out and visit them. I see new investments working towards that commitment. Also, between this month and next month, industry visits will be to Pepsi, Southern Packaging, Vantum, MJB, Benesville Print, Pops, and Marlboro. In terms of the, just to give you an update on the partnership, unfortunately, the chairman of the partnership cannot be here this afternoon, but I want to give a brief update. We're working on a new website for economic development, new marketing materials. We're also working on board training so the board understands structure and basic economic development. So, we're gonna talk about those things like the fee and lutes and just the basics of economic development. We also have re-energized the committees, buildings, the sites, infrastructure. We've also implemented education, workforce, finance, and image and marketing. I think Mr. Andy Egan is gonna talk a little bit about workforce development center. But, that's gonna be a tool that we're gonna use in economic development. And in the near future, we'd like for the council as well as the partnership board to take a tour of the newly renovated facility as well. Also, last but not least, we're still, I'm planning future recruitment trips to search for new industry. And that, that is what I'm.
Thanks, sir. Ms. McNeil, if you could, for everything that we've had third readings for, for the, I guess, the last year. I know we had a lot of projects, whatever the projects were, is to, you know, we had third readings and find out. It started from, like you said, Project Squeeze or Project Blueberry Hill. For the last, for all our third reads, can we get an update of a line item, say, we've done it and just the status of where they're at or either where we're at with them? So, we'll know an update of everything we're doing, we're reading first, second, third reading. And, but we're, I don't, I don't see anything going forward as far as moving dirt. Does that make sense? So, if you could, I would like an update as far as a, as a council member, for all the things that go forward, all of our third readings that we've passed, just give an update on each one of where we're at as far as moving forward. Still waiting on funding or whatever, just so we'll know. Thank you. I've got my mic off.
Might be too high, the mic is. Uh, anybody got anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, sir. Ms. Daniel, how you doing, sir?
Hey, Mr. Chairman. Thank y'all for allowing me to be with y'all this evening. We are really, really excited about being in Marlboro County. And it's really exciting, the Southwoods Avenue, that our campus here in Marlboro County. First of all, let me compliment y'all on your leadership team that y'all put together here in Marlboro. Tony Cliver, Mr. Tony McNeil, and William Simon. They have literally gone out their way to help Northeastern Technical College campus to become a reality of what it's come to today. And we really did appreciate, do appreciate y'all's help. And y'all really made us feel welcome and at home. But, Northeastern Technical College in Marlboro County are currently working together on workforce development to recruit new industries and new businesses for Marlboro County. And I will say that Northeastern Camp, Northeastern Technical College is the place for workforce training. We are currently in Chesapeake, Marlboro, and Dillon County. We currently employ a hundred and fifty-eight employees, which out of that hundred and fifty-eight, thirty-two of our employees are from Marlboro County. We have, we think, a huge economic impact by our annual salary of nine point six million and payoff that is being put back into the community. To give you just a few quick facts here. Spring semester, we enrolled one thousand three hundred and sixteen students in Chesapeake, Marlboro, and Dillon County. Out of that one thousand three hundred and sixteen, we had five hundred and fourteen students enrolled from the high schools in the three counties, which speak in dual enrollment. Now, our students are taking different courses. Give you an example, out of that, out of that thirteen sixteen, we have eight hundred and sixty-eight students that enrolled in our arts and science. We have two hundred and twenty-one students enrolled in the allied health. And we have two hundred and twenty-seven students enrolled in our workforce development program, which totals, those three total of one thousand three hundred and sixteen. Out of the breakdown per county, we have three hundred and eighty-eight students from Chawal enrolled. We have a hundred and eighty-one students enrolled at our campus in Patreon. So, the total enrollment in Chesapeake County is five hundred and sixty-nine students. In Dillon County, we have two hundred and eighty-three students from Dillon County. And in Marlboro County, we have three hundred and eighty-nine students enrolled at our, from Marlboro County. So, the Chawal enrollment and the Marlboro enrollment are just right at the same numbers. So, we also have other students enrolled from other counties. And we've got some students that come across the state line and are enrolled. So, that totals to the one thousand three hundred and sixteen. Out of the three hundred, of one thousand three hundred and sixteen students, three hundred and ninety students are male students and nine hundred and twenty-six are females. So, the female's out one of the males by three to one. But, we are proud of those numbers, we proud of our enrollment, and we are looking to see better things happen in Marlboro County. To give you an example, out of our student body, seventy-eight percent of our student enrolled are receiving some kind of financial aid. Whether it be life scholarship, Pellon Award scholarship, private donors give scholarships to students in nursing or other business fields. So, seventy-eight percent by enrolled is receiving financial aid. Now, the campus that you see here has grown quite significantly since we first established Marlboro County. The original building here, fifty-five thousand square feet, situated on five acres of land. Our expansion is eighteen thousand additional square feet to this building. So, our new facility, expanded facility, we have seventy-three thousand square feet on the roof. We expanded from a five acre campus, all this remaining area, we added twelve, twelve more acres to our campus. We have purchased this land for future developments, and I'll get into that in just a few minutes. But, the new investment, this expansion is a ten billion dollar investment that we're making here in Marlboro County. And we're proud of that. Now, the monies came from local, state. Now, the monies came from local, state, and federal dollars. We received five point five million dollars from the EBA. EBA waived one point one million of our local match. And we can also receive from the state, one point four million dollars, uh, towards this project. And we also got local monies of right at two million to purchase the equipment. So as you can see, this is a ten million dollar investment, any way you look at it. Now, what we're gonna do with this expansion, we can bring in new programs. New program will add student enrollment. Give you an example, eighteen thousand square feet was added, we're gonna have a five bay diesel technology and advanced manufacturing program in this new facility. We will expand on a welding program, we will establish, we got, we're going to have a fabrication shop. We are going to have logistics for warehousing, construction technology for trade, for the trade areas. We're gonna have electrical and that mechanical engineering program. We will have a CBL training program. We're gonna have a regional allied health training for LPNs will be expanded. EMS training in other healthcare, uh, areas will be, uh, taught here. We currently will continue housing SC works in our facility for, uh, employment, uh, purposes. We also will have a community room in our new, this expanded facility. So therefore, you as a council want to host a meeting or have a drop-in or entertain industrial prospect, we've got the community room there, and we also will have a full kitchen that members can be paired and serve right there in the facility. So we're excited about that. Now, let me mention to you about some future plans on the horizon. Right over here, we hope to have dorms constructed. We've already met with former Arizona owners now, and we've got floor plans and designs of dormitories right here. Not in Shawal, but right here in Marlboro County. Also, over here, we hope, looking in the future, hope to have a dental hygienist school right here in Marlboro County. High demand for dental hygienists, uh, in the area. And we also hoping to utilize your airport to bring in the aerod, uh, aerodynamics maintenance program. And, uh, we got a two million dollar grant for that, we're searching for and struggling. Also on the horizon, uh, Cosmo College, that's a big, big demand for Cosmo College. So these are things we are looking ahead of time about bringing right here to Marlboro County. For those, uh, sports enthusiasts, we do have some athletics, uh, uh, football, some technical college, esports. That's way above my head, it's a computer game, they compete nationally on the computer, and they're very, very competitive. Uh, uh, it's been very, it's way ahead of my time. We've got a golf team that plays out at y'all's golf course here. We have a cross-country team, and we have, we're working on a future soccer team. So those are some exciting things that we hope you will see happening here in Marlboro County. We hope that our, and plus our enrollment numbers will shoot up because of different programs we will have to offer. And one thing I may say, the idea that I had with the Economic Development Partnership group, uh, with Tony McNeil the other day, there, there were some questions, and as a result of the questions, we are already talking about looking at ways to bring heavy equipment operations program here in Marlboro County. We're communicating with the county and with Tony, looking at some land and some options, hopefully bring heavy equipment maintenance and operations program. Thank y'all.
Mr. England, I have a question. What about HVAC, because that's a need for Marlboro County?
HVAC?
Mm-hmm. Everybody, everybody, air conditioning breaks down. Sometime I've been at Marlboro County High School where eighty units were out.
Now, I have not been personally.
No, I'm just, I'm just letting you know.
But I would take that, keep Dr. Wagner.
That, that is something that's needed.
Another question came up last week about a linesman, electrical linesman program. And we looked into that, and we also, uh, we brought up, about trying to bring a three, four K kindergarten, pre-school kindergarten. That went over at Shawal Campus now. And, uh, those things are, we, we'll be looking at, I'll mention about that.
And the kin, and the kindergarten program.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Any other questions? We appreciate y'all's support.
Andy, they're an Alex program, we got any idea when that, that might take place?
Is that?
They're an Alex program, if you got any idea when?
Good question, gotta find a new structure. That's been the main headache of this endeavor. Uh, uh, but, uh, if, if that does become a reality, it will be here in Marlboro County, surely.
You mentioned something about dormitories, who would that, who would be housing the dormitories?
Who will be helping to housing? Well, actually, to tell you the truth, uh, we have gone up to Washington and asked them, this is something you then, asked them for support of ha, uh, housing Section Eight students that they live at home under Section Eight. They can come to our college and have a place to live under Section Eight. We're going to Washington on June the seventeenth, and that will be, again, one of the main topics that we talked to about getting some assistance on that. But we also have in the athletics program, we feel that the dormitories will draw students in for that as well.
Thanks, Mr. Um, uh, England, I know, but with the closing of, um, St. Andrews and another college, uh, with a last call. Well, I'm starting. A lot of kids, um, need to be reaching out and, uh, and probably looking at, um, Northeast Tech as a, um, continued education. And, and being a, you, you're doing athletics also, a lot of them works through the athletes, you know, um. I would even love to see that you break that even further, you know, with the, uh, with the basketball program, 'cause with, y'all were so close with the high school. The facilities, the everything already there, you know, so, um, yeah, but anyway, that, you got great ideas and, uh, we hope everything would, would move forward. And we as a council, our pitchforks can speak for everybody that we want Northeast Tech to grow, um, to a nice college.
And our HR group and our recruiting group is already, uh, put together a game plan to go to St. Andrews and try to recruit students.
Hmm, correct, good.
One last thing, just handout again, take it home, look at it, we got a lot of facts and figures about Marlboro County. But one thing that we are really proud of is that this right here, the front bottom corner, of the top fifteen best associate programs in South Carolina, Northeastern Technical College ranked fifth. Out of fifteen, standing for the best associate program, uh, in South Carolina. So that speaks really good of our staff, our faculty, and our students. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir. Next, we got recognition of citizens before council, um, Mr. Watts.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How we have all, now, my mohawk, what we doing, okay? How we have all the force, we can sit down out, go to the, I don't care how many, thirteen years. And I definitely can't be in a gun range for thirteen years. Um, I don't worry, so that, I've talked to DNR, um, uh, that, 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 I don't worry about it a lot. But I sit on my deck, and the bullets fly by my eye. I can see it, that boat, they walk back a boat round, they shoot pistols, trying to bounce the bullet down the river, and I, why I'm there. I don't worry, my next option is to start saying my lap, which I would, I don't know. I don't really know, I mean, I know you can't put a damn thing down there, twenty-four, thirty-five, like that. I mean, it's all hours in the night, um, AR, just wrapping bullet, it's seven days a week. Christmas time is real bad, 'cause everybody gets a new bill of Christmas. Summertime is worse than work day. But I'm, I'm, I'm going to y'all, ask y'all, if anything, I want to hear.
Did I, I, on Blues Boat Round? And so we have to look into, um, I've been brought to our attention again, um, say, been a wife, has you been by here?
Well, I've been.
I, I took, been, been here to the council.
I've never been here.
You've never been here before, okay.
Is it children, adults, or?
DNR, you know, that, how they put up any signs and news, you know. Like they do, they shoot, uh, street eyes, they shoot them around. And I don't wanna say riff ramp, but none of them got those, I see far, and all of them, all hours in the night.
Who own that land?
We do.
We, we own that land, okay. It's all the beating.
Is it children or adults or a mixture that you, you know?
Yes, mixture, or nothing. But, um, you can end as bad as it used to be, my son had one that broke down three times. It's, it ain't as bad as it used to be, but it used to be real bad, like, you couldn't wait to be there. You let it go, I don't worry about that. I can just say with my phone, you can hear the bullets whistle out, going down the river.
So you think they're using it as a shooting range or something? Well, definitely need to share, to know about that.
Okay, thanks, sir. Mm-hmm. Yeah, Mr. Deborah Lord here. Ms. Lord? Hey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Deborah Lord, and I reside at four, fourteen colleges in the state of South Carolina. I would like to come here with, uh, council people, councilwoman, Curly Lawson. Today, she had a true digital literacy training program, and she will offer lunch. And, and, and completing the program, we're seeing a tablet, so I thank her for bringing something for the seniors here. Thank you.
Welcome, you're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lord, that program was, is through medical net, and seniors, uh, fifty, sixteen and older can get a free tablet for a whole year and get the internet free, you wanna show them your tablet? And they got training on that, so they enjoyed it, it was a lot of fun.
It was.
And I wanna thank the people who come and say, thank you. But, um, Ms. Betty Jo Quick, uh, president of Marlboro County NACCP, she helped with the refreshments and Dr. Cole. So we just want to make sure that Marlboro County citizens have that, so we're gonna connect again with that, it's free. Thank you, and that's where I spent most of my time this morning, y'all, so I was here to be. Twenty, twenty-six of them got tablets.
Um, is that the session, do we need to go into that session, anything? Okay, we're moving on. Old Business, order number eight six five, ordering to adopt the annual budget and to make appropriation for Marlboro County for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, second reading.
So this budget is, you know, I'm pretty fast for actual numbers in the budget, we do have some numbers, uh, in terms of budget. We still have, uh, another workshop planned, um, for the twentieth, next week. So, uh, this is, uh, a budget to move forward, with some numbers and some sort of indication of what we're looking at. Um, but this is just a second reading, not a final reading of this, uh, but that's what we have.
Okay. That being said, there's a motion for order eight six five.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before we take a motion, um, I, a, after looking at this budget, looking at the increase, looking at what is projected, uh, in good faith, I, I just, with the numbers I have, uh, the date that it's given us, from not actual, it's actual for, as of February, not as of April, uh, you know, as, as of May, I, I, from what I have, I can't move forward past the second reading, so we can dive into it, whatever everybody asks for as may. I'll vote, I'll make a motion not approved on this eight six five, second reading, whatever they need.
I just need to make a comment before we even take a vote. I, there's too many, um, unanswered questions and too many things that we have not taken a deep dive in this budget. I am concerned about a lot of these accounts that we still haven't gotten clarity on. There's too many, uh, open accounts that we know nothing about, and I really want some clarification, I really want some clarification on that. 'Cause we, if you look at this budget, one month, one month, January, you may have eight point seven million dollars in one, and then you go come down with two hundred and eleven thousand, then April, you're gonna come up with one point seven, and now you're gonna come up with three point three. I need to know where five million dollars at in, in certain account, I need to know that, I need to know how this money is spent. I see one account right now, hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars was in it last month, now we got seventeen hundred in it. Uh-uh, I can't, I really have to look at this.
What part of county speak about specifically?
Treasures account for one. I, I got it, I mean, I have the numbers, I just, like I said, uh, we need to take a deep dive in this budget.
Okay, well, the, um, I need a, I need a motion somewhere down the line to, um, anybody that gave a comment for that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I looked through it too. What concerns me is some same stuff, but what I'm looking at is, is going into the railroad fund, it looks like a million dollars is being taken out of the railroad fund. That fund was set up some fifty years ago when the county had the insight, the council that was here, uh, former Senator Jack Lindsey, Ronnie Crowe, decided it was in the best interest of Marlboro County to buy the railroad rather than have CSX dig the tracks up, and they did that. And of course, I know for a fact, if we hadn't have had the insight to bought the railroad, Don Tarr, probably Mohawk, and other industries along the line, uh, Cargill, Goldkiss, they would probably have gone out of business many, many years ago if we hadn't have, uh, had the railroad. But that fund was set up to maintain enough money that at some point in time, it would cause major overhaul of the railroad tracks to keep it going. And it looks like to me, from what I'm seeing, I'm seeing a million dollars coming out of that fund this year. And I, I mean, I just, uh, I don't see how we can rob a fund like that that is set up to sustain several industries that run along that railroad track. So no, I'm a, I'm a no vote on it too, right now, I'm just not ready to even commit to the second reading.
Uh, Mr. Blackman?
I, I agree with what they said, I've looked at it, I don't want to go further with that.
With that being said, um, can I get a motion, um, on order eight six five to postpone the, um, second reading to after we have our budget workshop?
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, we, uh, we had a several discussion, all in favor of postponing order number eight six five, um, the second reading to a later date, show of hands? Unanimous. Um, with that, uh, order eight six six, um, are we assuming that, that, uh, they just say apply for the, uh, capital improvement plan?
So move postpone eight six six.
Second.
Motion been made in second, all in favor, show of hands? Thank you. So, um, order eight six five and eight six six, after we do our budget workshop, uh, we have another, um, meeting, probably another call meeting. Uh, we all know that, uh, the budget need to be approved by June the thirtieth, so, uh, there'll be several meetings in the next, um, forty-five days so we can get this budget approved, um.
Chairman, if you wanna.
Yes, sir.
Um, um, if we're gonna, uh, postpone this to after the workshop, um, I'm sure Wes would appreciate, and, and myself. If we can get some specific questions from members of council, you know, let us know, some of the things that you're actually looking at that give you concern, so we can, you know, dive onto those.
I mean, I, it start, I mean, we got a one point seven million dollar increase for a budget. I mean, that's, that's number one, we can start now, start later, I mean, that's a one point seven million dollar increase to the budget.
We do.
I mean, that's a, I mean, that's, that's, that's a lot.
Those questions will be delivered in.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, 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 get the question back, um, 'cause we know that we had several people doing the, um, the workshop we had all day today with the, um, department heads. There was a lot of requests for increases also, and Mr. West, uh, implemented a lot of that into the budget. Uh, those that came in, that spoke, department head, uh, requesting, uh, X amount of dollars, someone with, um, first responders, um, so a lot of that were added. Uh, those that came in, that spoke, department head, uh, requesting, uh, X amount of dollars, someone with, um, first responders, um, so a lot that were added into the budget, uh, ahead of time. But, um, like I say, what Mr. Claver said, write down, uh, uh, send emails, uh, to specific questions, uh, so we come in on the twentieth. We won't be, um, uh, logged down on, and, and reaching for sprawl, if somebody say something, have the direct questions, so Mr. West and his team, um, Mr. Jenkins can, um.
Do that in twenty-seven, because, you know, if, if I'm getting responses, you know, may they.
It's a while, twenty-seven. Yeah, with, yeah, yeah, okay, all right, any more, uh, questions, um, Mr. Claver, okay? New business, order number eight six eight, the order authorizing the execution of a municipal, uh, election transfer and cost of fee agreement between Marlboro County and the city of Benetfield, first reading.
So, uh, I do have, I, I received a request, uh, a few months ago from, uh, my counterpart of the city, uh, administrator, Mr. Wade Simon. Um, they had asked that, uh, we take, basically take over the elections for the city of Benetfield, like we've done for other municipalities in the, in the county. And I would like to have him come and speak and just give a, um, a basic overview of what they're asking. Uh, we are gonna have to, um, look at doing an ordinance, um, much like the ones we've done with other municipalities.
Mr. Chair, council members, uh, greetings, uh, from the city of Benetfield. Uh, thank you for allowing me to be tonight, uh, be here tonight. Uh, our city council authorized me to make a request, um, to Marlboro County. And that request is to ask the county to assume the responsibility of, uh, municipal elections, uh, on behalf of the city. Why are we asking for this? Well, we think our citizens can be better served, uh, because the county has an actual elections office, fully staffed. Uh, we did consult with our own elections commission, uh, they concur with the request. Uh, how can we do this? Well, we know that section five fifteen one forty-five of South Carolina full laws allows us to do this. Uh, and so with that being said, I put in an official request, uh, to the administrator, so we will continue to support financially, uh, the elections. And just to let you know, your elections office is currently, uh, carrying out a lot of the duties all waiting for us. In my short time here, uh, it's been great, I've had an opportunity to work closely with, um, this Christine Thompson, um, she's phenomenal. Uh, and so, uh, the, the office is already doing a lot of the work now, and then they invoice us, and then we're already supporting it financially. The only thing our election commission is actually doing, uh, is certifying the elections. So this will make it more efficient, uh, gives more integrity to the process, uh, we think that'll serve our citizens by allowing the county and their office, uh, to assume those responsibilities. Uh, we must do this with a joint ordinance, and I think that's what's before you tonight is a draft of that ordinance.
Would that be said, thank you, Mr. Simon, uh, for coming, um, can I get a motion for the first?
Motion to approve ordinance eight sixty-eight.
Second.
Most have been made in second and discussion, hearing none, all in favor for first reading? Unanimous, appointment to boards and commission, other boards and commissions, um, PD workforce, a request for a reappointment. That was, um, with Mr. Bass, is that the one for, um, for Mr. Bass, that they want him to be reappointed? PD workforce development board?
I, I have a request too, sir, if we, I saw that one, but I also wanted to ask that council will, we also consider this request from Ms. Latonya Abraham, she's with vocational rehab. She's giving us some information about what her qualifications are, she lives here in Marlboro County. She served with the South Carolina, um, vote for rehab, South Carolina Department of Employment workforce. I, I know that she's a dynamic person there because she really has been in, in workforce development for twenty years. I think we need some fresh ideas, some fresh people to bring forth and work closely with our economic development staff. No, not taking anything from anyone, but business wise, sometimes we need to look at updating and changing our board members. So that's one of the reasons she, well, she showed an interest, and I, I think this is a great opportunity to make some changes.
That was PD workforce development board?
So, listening to that, I would like to put forth a motion then, that we accept Ms. Latonya Abraham to be appointed to the PD car board.
I second that motion.
Most have been made in second? All in favor? Unanimous, okay, you give Ms. Um, Rivers that information?
Yes.
She can, um.
She has a problem.
Maybe necessary, um, phone calls. Uh, September the biz, Lindsey Park project.
Mr. Chairman, council members, you have before you a, uh, letters are prepared, um, describing the, uh, the project of Lindsey Park. Uh, you see the bid tabulation and other information, uh, where the, uh, project located at one point two Lindsey Park Road in Benetfield. The low bidder on the project is S M B Construction out of Florence, South Carolina, at a cost of three hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. Also included is a signing sheet for the required pre-bid meeting, um, as well as the request for bid that was advertised April first, twenty twenty-five. On the county website and S K O and addendums one and two that were issued after the pre-bid conference. As stipulated in the request for bid, a mandatory pre-bid conference was held April seventeenth. Representatives of eight firms attended with four of those submitting timely and complete bids. A fifth bid, uh, fifth firm submitted a bid via email, but was sent after the twelfth o'clock P M on May first, uh, twenty twenty-five. Staff recommendations were to contract to S M B Construction in the amount of three hundred sixty-seven thousand for the demolition and construction of the Lindsey Park facility. The funding, uh, towards a million dollar project is five hundred thousand dollars from Land and Water Conservation Grant. And five hundred thousand from funding from the legislative delegation. The remaining components of the project include some rehabilitation playing fields, uh, replacement of existing fencing, renewed black vinyl coated fence, and those in landscape and crackureceticles. Uh, you can see the bid opening sheet, uh, I think we're very tight with, uh, we have three bidders between three sixty-seven and three seventy-five. They have one outlier of four hundred and seventy-six thousand, so I think it's very clear that, uh, the contractors that, uh, reviewed the information were seeing the same, uh, project. And I think, uh, I think we've got a, you know, a, a good bid here. Uh, I was able to contact, uh, the owner of S M B, they've got extensive experience with parks and rec. Uh, they did all of the fields in Florence, uh, high schools, uh, and, uh, they're also the, the, uh, the key contractor for McLeod Regional Health as well. So they've done some really large commercial projects, so I feel very confident about the ability of this firm to complete the project and do, and do a big job.
Was we awarded, um, bids, they start working June, July, August?
Well, what will happen is assuming you approve this this evening, we'll post an intent to award, uh, tomorrow, and then the actual, uh, the notice to proceed will take place, uh, the Tuesday after Memorial Day. And then, of course, at that point in time, it'll mobilize and begin the project, I think it's, should be a fairly quick turnaround. Obviously, we've got other components that need to be bid, but, uh, I think the facility itself is a significant, you know, start.
Cause I know the, um, the D C U baseball, uh, they had the all-star practices and, and, uh, and so forth, so we gonna make sure they don't overlap.
I mean, they, they have, put the best up, but they didn't have a practice, you know?
Sure. Um, and, and questions?
Chairman, I'd like to motion we approve our staff recommendation.
Second. And discussion? Hearing none, show of hands? And ladies and gentlemen, we're ready for, uh, uh, for a little debate then, um, thank Mr. West. You might understand that you can hear.
Yeah, I've got some other reports right behind this, um, you've got the, uh, general fund revenues for the ten-month ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Um, the revenue's total of eleven million, six sixty-six oh eight, and comparison with the ten-month ending April thirtieth, twenty-four, in the amount of eleven million, eight eighty-five thirty-three. Uh, general fund expenditures through April thirtieth of twenty-four, total thirteen million, seventy-one thousand, four hundred thirty-four dollars. Of a fourteen million, seven hundred forty-eight thousand, five hundred forty-three dollar budget for eighty-eight point six three percent of budget year-to-date. Expenditures for the ten-month ending April thirtieth of twenty-four, total eleven million, uh, nine forty-one, seven forty-two. In summary, income is less than prior year because of the labor payments, the state fee and lieu payments, state manufacturer reimbursement, merchandise inventory reimbursement, homestead, uh, reimbursement. Those amounts which the county received in March and April last year exceeded one point two million dollars. When taking that into consideration, revenues for general taxes will exceed our budget, however, you know, expenditures are significantly higher than last year. Well, obviously, we continue to monitor collections and expenditures for the current and, uh, upcoming budget.
And as a projection, where we're going now, of course, you've seen change in the last two months, you know, we had April thirtieth in here, we didn't have April thirtieth in here, and, uh, yeah, I cut the back and forth, so.
One, one thing I've.
On a projection from now, from where we are, where do you see us, if we stay on a projection now, it's agenda?
If, if you look at the current expenditures, they were about a little over one point one million, so we were actually, on that basis. You know, we're, we're on target with the expenditure, so I think we've seen those expenditures slow down. Cause if you multiply that times twelve, we roughly get to what our, uh, budget amount would be. So, uh, I think that it's still gonna end up very close to what I indicated in our, uh, workshop, where we, we talked about basically where we, where we were with this budget. I think we're still gonna end up using about a million and a half dollars worth of fund balance.
So, Mr. Park, thank you, I don't wanna cut across, this time next month, if we look at projected one point one mill.
Right.
For next month, that's gonna bring us right to at five hundred and sixty-four thousand. Then if we go another month, one point one mill, that's gonna have us in a negative.
Yeah, well, and one thing that's gonna happen, um, it's, it's gonna be a little less negative because of the fact that our, our revenues, I'm, I'm confident our revenues will exceed budget. Uh, so, um, that will help to offset some of that, but still, we, we budgeted to be at a one point two million dollar deficit roughly. And so, you know, we're, we're saying we think we're gonna end up being at a one point five million.
Yeah, that's what it looks like. I won't have any questions now, I'll just wait till the budget workshop.
Yeah, I mean, we could, I mean, I had a whole lot of questions, you see, from, uh, from, I had a whole lot of questions for the, for, like, which one we're gonna have a problem, I have to ask. Uh, one thing I, I made note of, you know, is, is the increase, what's I seeing where we had, uh, a, a, a Filo change, you know? There's only a certain amount of tax dollars in Marlboro County here, so the Filo change is gonna, what I see is Rob Peter to pay pop, that's basically what we're doing. And so I, I just, I, I, that's the reason I voted against it, I wanted, I know we deferred it, but I, I can't sleep at night without saying, uh, I'm. I'm, if I'm squelching, I'm squelching, but, uh, I just, I just cannot see laying down another night knowing that's what we do. If we take from one, there's only a certain amount of tax dollars, if we take it from somebody, the, whoever it is, some, eh, some people has the ability to raise the millage at will. And if you take it from them, only thing they're gonna do is raise taxes, raise tax mills, and they're gonna pin it on county council for taking money. I'm not gonna sit up here, and we can go to second reading or third reading with this, I will not move forward with that, so I'll let staff know, I'll let whoever else know, whoever's watching, uh. Like I said, I, I've, I've, I spent three nights going through it, I know people's asked for requests, and I don't have a problem asking for a request, but it's just the point, there's only a certain amount of tax dollars coming to Marlboro County. Uh, because we, you know, nothing, we've had some big projects that, uh, you know, that's not landed, nothing to do with economic development, it just didn't land, so, uh, it's just, it, we, once you only have a certain amount of tax dollars, it's just, uh. I'm, I, I can't sit here and say that I'm, I'm.
I'm gonna pass this around, this just gives you, you know, like a one-page summary of, of what you've got in your packet. And let me mention this, we do not have any, there's no provision for additional staffing, I know you've heard a lot of requests for that. There's no provision for capital other than what's, what's basically here that's already been, uh, you know, approved, so anyway, there's. I know there's probably a lot of other needs that people feel like are not being addressed.
Now, I, I mean, yeah, the, the redistribution of fee and lieu income, that was from what was already there, so if you, if you take what was in the budget, the one point one million, where does it come from? I mean, it, it's already set for last year, that fee is already set, the tax dollars already, so if we take it, where do, and put it in our budget, where does it come from?
Are there any other measures that we can undertake to offset, because again, if we do that, then I'm almost certain the, the, the school district is gonna be able to, you know, raise taxes. And, you know, if, if I'm on the school board and, and, and this happened, I'm doing that as well, cause if this, if this taken from our bottom line and, and we have the ability to tax the citizens, then. It's probably a bet that they're gonna do this, are there any other measures that we can undertake that prevents us from doing that?
One of the things, no, I, I, I don't think so, you know, not unless you wanna dig another, you know, million dollar block hole. Um, the, the other issue is that we've got, you know, reassessment, and of course, we're anticipating as part of reassessment, basically capturing the. Part of the effect of inflation, and, you know, of course, we also had a deficit last year too, so, you know, we probably must recover that millage, but I'm not, I'm not including a, a millage increase in, uh, in this budget document.
Yeah, but the, the rea- the reassessment is, you know, and I've asked about that last time, and that, I mean, I wish, he's, well, I, I mean, there's a, the, I asked the, for that one to be here to explain this stuff to us, and we, you know, and so it's like we're, we're not getting, we're hearing all this stuff, hearing all this stuff. You know, we said, well, the reassessment is gonna generate this, well, if you, if we do a reassessment, to get more money, it's still gonna be a tax, and it's gonna be on the backs of the houses, not, it's gonna be on the backs of the houses in Marlboro County.
What, what tends to happen is after reassessment, uh, real estate is taxed at a higher level. As, as reassessment wanes, what you find is that effect comes downward. Because effectively that liability shifts more to, you know, things like business personal property vehicles, uh, other things that are not subject to, you know, valuation. But if you look at valuation, fifteen percent increase in the value of a home over a five-year period is probably not unrealistic, particularly when you look at what's happened with the pandemic, and you look what, what's happened really since, you know, twenty twenty. Uh, real estate prices have rocketed, obviously, the, the impact of that has not been experienced here, but you go a lot of other places, you know, many real estate values doubled in that five-year period.
Yeah, it's.
We're a long ways away.
Yeah, it's.
Are we strategically doing the evaluation process in a manner that's consistent across the board? Or are you just saying fifteen percent, you know, without really truly evaluating?
You'll, you'll have to talk with the.
Yeah, we, we asked for the tax.
We do, we need him.
To, uh, you know, discuss his methodology, but, you know.
Yeah, I asked for the tax session, so I, I would expect the next time we meet, from Mr. Clyde, but I'd expect for him to be here. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm not gonna sit up here as a, as a citizen of Marlboro County, even though I'm on council, as a citizen of Marlboro County, hearing what I'm hearing, and allow this to go on. I, I can't do it, I'm not gonna do it, I'm, I mean, so, I, I don't know what everybody else up here do, but I'm not, I'm not gonna do it. So I, I want him here, uh, I want him here next time to answer the questions from me.
The, the other thing we need to remember too, when we look back three years, four years ago, whatever timeframe is, we lost around five hundred and sixty seven, five hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars when Mohawk closed. We have not supplanted that money back into our budget. We have not had that many industries come in to replace that five hundred and eighty seven thousand or five sixty seven. So it's been like a domino effect, we've been steady going down as far as, uh, when, when Mohawk left, I mean, that's a chunk of money. Uh, a budget then, it was what, twelve and a half, thirteen million dollars? And we lost five hundred and eighty five thousand dollars of tax money coming from an industry that had been here well over fifty years, you know? And that we just, we're, I'm like, I'm like, everybody sitting up here, we're, we're going down a road that none of us want to wake up a year or two years from now and face the people of this county and say, you know, we should have done something. And I think now's the time to do it.
You know, the way it's going, I don't see no way, if we go like this, taxes are gonna go up on everybody. And, uh, I'm ready to look at something right now, but before that happens, I don't, I don't want taxes going up on our citizens. Uh, they struggling too much now, and if we got to do something, I want, I want to start doing it right now.
Granted, we have done a, 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 an excellent job of not going up on the millage, just to live, we're still behind on, not necessarily behind, but we, we haven't.
We haven't.
On the, you know, we could have.
So, four dollars a year along the way, by the time you got to thirty dollars is a whole lot more, and by the time you do it in reassessment, you got seventy five dollars a year. So if we're not going up a little bit, yeah, I'm not saying we don't have to go up a little, we have to go, there has to be some, but with this budget, uh, we, I mean, there, this was, that was shown tonight, or they gave to us, uh, you know, that was, I was way out of line for what I'm willing to vote on. I understand everything's going up, uh, you know, but get back to the reassess, there's a whole lot of stuff that we gotta have a whole lot of meetings about.
Whole lot of trimming the path too.
Is there any financial prospects that we have coming in before this June thirtieth?
Not significant.
Not significant, uh, but what I will say is, I mean, you're right, we have an increase in, in the bottom line of the budget, in expenses for next year. It's, it's gonna be up to, um, to staff and to council. If we're going to cut it back one point seven million, uh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be some deep cuts in some areas. Now, we heard some things that some became in, in need, but we're gonna have to cut some things even from what we're doing right now, because it is just a lot more expensive to run the government, not adding more services, doing what we're doing right now, it's just a lot more expensive. And so either we're going to have to find ways to get the money through reassessment, FLO, or millage adjustment, or cutting back. It's gonna have to be a combination of all four, whatever percent we're gonna have to look at, and, I mean, numbers are the numbers, we have, we're gonna have to do it.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I've been, I've been on council, we had, when we had to furlough employees, that was not good, but at the rate we're, I mean, I, I, I do not want to do that, but I mean, it's, you know, that's the rate that I, I feel like we were going, I mean, I, I've been on council, we had to furlough employees, it wasn't good. And so, uh, and so, yeah, I mean, hard, hard decisions, it, it has to be made this year.
Well, we, we did, we, we were going council, uh, I was going council also, we did furlough, some, uh, employee, uh, embraced it. Uh, maybe we do some, now we got a, a three-day weekend, but I think we may, we say we're over one point two million, one point five million, but we say we're not short of time. But anyway, that, that is a, a, a option, might not be a favorable option, but, um, I think, um, people rather have a, a furlough than a, a millage, or tax increase. But like I say, we, we're causing living going up, and we stay the same, and, and, you know, there's nothing coming in, it, it just, I said, numbers, numbers don't lie.
It don't.
So, so just for perspective, since, I believe, twenty eighteen, we've gone up with one and a half to?
Yeah, yeah, because we looked, we were at, I think we were at ninety five mils or ninety three.
Ninety three seventy five, ninety three seventy five or so somewhere.
Since that time, since twenty eighteen, it's been seven years, and we've only been up one point five mils in that time period. And again, you know, we, we, the numbers are hard, and they're right there, and we have choices. If you're not gonna go up on the millage, then we have to cut back some things that, as we've heard today from, from the budget workshop, people do need in some of their departments. So, we might do one or the other.
Present to us some, some, some healthy options, that we can at least assess as a council, see is that what we can do.
We'll cut deeper, we'll do that.
Yeah, I mean, I would have, I would like to see three options for second reading. I mean, and it may have a workshop, then we have to have a, that, we may have to have a workshop for council, give the numbers back to staff like we've done before, and then come back for the second reading, and then see where we're at, and then go to a third reading.
I mean, the budget process should be like, the budget process shouldn't be as easy as it had been in the past for us just, you know, saying, yeah, because something was presented to us, and honestly, that's how it's been. The first couple of years I was on council, I was horrified at how we did, you know, but we just said, yeah, without any scrutiny, because this is the citizens' money that we are spending, so if you all could present us with some healthy options, so as a council we can look at to be, um, really, really fruitful in how we engage this year's budget. We know we're praying for the rain, we're praying for the increase, but we, where we are right now, we're still in limbo with some things, but if you all could present us with some healthier options, uh, we'll take those things under consideration.
And what we, we need to do is, again, if we come to the next, next Tuesday, the next workshop, you know, if everyone can, you know, please try to be there with their questions, and we'll take all the time we need, answer the questions that need to be answered, uh, all the different account information, we'll have that on hand. Um, you know, Wes, you can make sure we get a ledger of everything, so we'll be able to say where everything went. And then as far as the different expenses for every department, we'll have it line by line. Look at it, and it's, you can bring a red pen, because we have to cut some things. And it's just that simple. And whatever we come up with, that you can live with, is what's gonna happen in the past. We, we, we definitely needed these before, you know.
Yeah, yeah, time's running out.
So, you know, let's, let's, let's go ahead and make the hard decisions, and you have to live with it.
Wes, on average, over the last, you've been here, over the last five budgets. And I know you can't be exactly accurate, but what, what, what is, what is the average, we've had to go into the reserve, the balance, the budget?
Well, here, here's the thing, we actually added to reserves, um. Prior to this last audit report, we added, you know, almost a million dollars in the reserves. Prior to that, it was a few hundred thousand dollars. So, what we've seen is our costs have been increasing, but our revenues haven't kept up with the, uh, level of cost increase. And I think a lot of that, when you think about what happened during the pandemic, you know, fortunately, we were, I think, you know, our, our expenses were pretty low then, but there was a lot of pressure put on salaries and compensation. Uh, employees saw some pretty significant increases, even with the county budget, and I think going back was in twenty two, I know, uh, Doris is here, we were talking a little bit about this, we actually did see some pretty significant increases in compensation, going back to, you know, I think it was twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. So one thing we, we have seen is, you know, obviously our, our costs have definitely increased significantly. But we were actually adding to fund balance rather than taking away.
You brought out a good point, Mr. Uh, um, Parks, because in twenty twenty two, I saw that, but when twenty twenty three I came on council, there was significant increase in, in salaries all across the board. You had some significant high salaries in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three, but especially twenty twenty two.
Even, even, even people that were earning very low wages, they were earning like ten dollars, well, if you give them a twenty percent increase to, you know, to twelve dollars, I mean, they had not a bunch of money,
but they were already on the bottom.
Yeah, then we increase some to five, fifteen dollars, that's a lot.
Right, but they were already on the bottom, they were on the bottom, so they needed to come up, you had people on the bottom, that was, that wasn't right.
And we did, you know, there, there were things, you know, like for example, the sheriff's department, Chinese overtime, I mean, how many, how many sheriff's departments in this?
How, how much did, how much did that increase the general, the government changes overtime?
That was, that was significant.
It was a lot.
But, but it needed to.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
First of all, I don't know how limited it is for that.
Yeah.
We, we should, we, the county, the county should not been working, nobody should have been working with Chinese overtime. So, to get that to where it needed to be, that's one of the things that, but, but it, but it costed, you're right, it did cost.
It's cost.
But we just have to do our due diligence, departments may have to be deferred, you know, uh, and some other departments might have to have priority, that's the, the, the nature of where we at right now. You know, some departments might have to have priority over others with the work that Mr. Manille is putting in, with the prospect that he just, uh, mentioned before council. There are some things that are in the fire, but, you know, unfortunately this year, we might have to make some executive decisions and defer some of those expenses for, uh, some departments, and honor some defense, some, some expenses for some department, but present some options, please, so we can have a, 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 a clear look at what we can do.
Now, those options will come after we have the.
Correct, after we had the workshop.
After we had the workshop, then we'll go back, and the next week we'll present some really good options for you.
Cause he don't, you don't even know what we've got questions about today, till we have the next meeting, so yeah.
And once you get line by line, and you get your red pens, and you start marketing stuff out, we'll give you some options, and then we can go to next week and repeat, we can do it again.
I've got two other reports in here, one is the cash balances, the other is the, you know, capital projects, and then the last report has to do with the reporting of the RFP lines. Uh, so, I don't know if there are any questions about that, I'm glad to answer anything like that.
I'll wait till we get to the budget.
I'll ready to set the payment for it. Okay, thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good evening, council. Uh, first, I want to thank Mr. Neal for, um, giving a report on behalf of the partnership. I know you wanted to see something, um, from the partnership, uh, quarterly, and that will start this month, now, next month, we will, uh, do housing. Uh, they will come in and give a report, they've already agreed to that, and so, we'd be fortunate to have it for, for next month. Uh, I do want to report a few things, uh, to council and to the citizens. First of all, we will have a baseball summer camp, um, as far as funding, that's funded, it's my sponsor, so it's not going in the budget. Um, we will be having our first annual summer baseball camp, July fourteenth through the twenty eighth, and that'll be in Wallace. We're trying to move everything around in parts of the county. Uh, we did have scheduled some games in, uh, Clayo, a call today, for baseball, uh, however, uh, with, uh, the weather, it just didn't hold up. And, and so, we're gonna be scheduling games, so when people in, in those areas, nothing will affect the people from McCall and Clayo, being very patient with us, if we, um, try to move forward and, and get very inclusive with everyone in the county, when it comes to, um, recreation and Mr. Odom and Mr. Woods, kinda spearheaded that effort to try to make sure we can, uh, be inclusive of everyone. Uh, as far as public works, this is one of these different departments that we are really gonna make sure we have, have to keep funded. Um, we have several washed out roads, we've had two days of some of the heaviest rain we've had in a while, and it affects, and some of the areas, I spoke with Mr. Cuddy today, um, open Wallace, you know, those hills, you got a lot of roads that don't have anything on them, except for dirt, and so, they're doing some pretty good work out there. Um, Clayo, more than normal, has had some, some areas outside of Clayo, and then outside of McCall, there have been some areas, uh, that, that we've had to work on. So, um, they're, they're pretty busy, and that, and that's in addition to the normal areas that we see flooding all the time. But those areas in particular, um, we've had some, some issues over the past couple of days, and we're not out of the woods yet, we're looking for rain coming up, and so, I just want citizens to be careful, uh, make sure that you are not traveling some of those really bad roads that you have to, and we'll get to them as soon as we can, quick as possible. Uh, the grass cutting, that's the same group that cuts the grass in some of the areas and rightways, uh, and, and they're, they're really busy with the roads right now, we can, as, as you probably can imagine. So, they're really busy with the roads, but we're gonna get back to, um, going to grass, and they're gonna, um, be caught up with the grass and the ditches, and make sure we clear away some drainage. And also, I do want to thank our public service department, as well as the sheriff's department, and the, and the detention center, working together to, um, implement inmate assistance, uh, program. We actually have, um, gone to different parts of the county. Uh, I know before we were kind of Bennettsville area, uh, they went over to Clayo, cleaned up pretty well, went over outside of McCall, cleaned up pretty well, and they did some areas outside of Wallace, and, and haven't been over to Blenheim yet. Uh, we're gonna get to Blenheim this week, we're supposed to get to Blenheim this week, so, um, we do appreciate everyone working together and making sure that's a possibility. Um, and, and that's pretty much it, any questions for council, about anything?
Now, there's, if, if you could get, uh, on Garden Road.
Garden Road?
Yeah, Mr. Levine's residence, they, they built a new, uh, well, it's not new, they just added some houses and roads in years past, and so he's getting a lot of flood and water coming down, and see if, uh, what we can do, and I can get you the exact address, I mean, it's, all the rain goes up under his house, and you know, it's just from adding a subdivision up above it and changing roads, so we're gonna see if what we, if we can do about that.
Okay, sure.
I'll get you the exact address.
Donal's request?
Donna Lane again.
Okay, and that's where the trucks are going in.
With Ed Fielders, uh, Ed Fielders, no matter how much we do that, those trucks are gonna cut prematurely, and it's gonna, but Donna Lane really needs some attention.
Okay, and the other areas we need to.
I want to commend Mr. Sheriff. If you go on and put your name in for the lit, permit and letter, sir, I sent you the address. You have been doing, you and the inmates have been doing some cleanup, and I really do, really appreciate the sheriff's department, cause he have, he makes sure that they're there. So, I will, cause they helped with the cleanup when I participated. But you, I noticed that you've sent me some things that what y'all have been doing, May first, we had something. But I want to say, if you go on and put that in yourself, you'll, every month, if you do, give them their number of bags that is, that you're picking up, mattresses, all those kinds of things, toilets and all that, that makes a lot. But I do want to say that I do commend you for what I know is happening in the Bennettsville area, not just District Four, but, um, I always say District Four. But just because I do know that there are some areas that you are cleaning up, so I do thank you for that, but I would like to make sure that we definitely keep those bypass, that bypass four one and thirty eight and those Carneyham Boulevard, we need to continuously stay with that being cut, we need to stay with that being picked, the trash picked up, because that's where the traffic is coming in now, and we need to keep that, those areas. I would hope that one day we can get some of that moved stuff around, some of these corners, quarters that comes in, we need to be looking at that, it'll make it more beautiful. So things like that, but I do appreciate everything that y'all are doing, I really do.
I did put that stuff in the state system.
Okay.
Just the other day.
You did a good job on that, thank you.
Any other questions? It's Dean, um, a couple weeks ago we met, the public safety, uh, committee met, and so, um, we were able to meet, and we discussed, uh, a recommendation from the fire coordinator, uh, for what was actually in the budget, but there was no, we just discussed what he had talked about, but there's no recommendation this time, so we don't know where the budget is, and we're meant to be shared. Uh, one thing we wanted to get, uh, accomplished in that is to understand everything he had in his budget, you know, as for, for everything, you know? And I think, uh, at the end of, there still might have been one or two things, but, uh, you know, the thing was to get some clarity, and I think the sheriff had some clarity for his budget, you know, and, and he said, you know, once you know what's in it and where it's all at, you know, he's, he, he was dedicated to work within that budget. So, without knowing it, you know, you can't know what the budget is, so I think, uh, is that right? I think the sheriff said he was pleased with, you know, get, get, having that, that work session, and so, with the public safety committee, and so, uh, so we were able to get that more accomplished.
Uh, register, council members, um, remember, this.
Uh, Mr. Brown, you've been sitting back here patient, is there something you'd like to say?
Not this time.
Okay, uh, I didn't want to overlook you sitting back there. Uh, would like to thank, uh, Chair Charles. Oh, would like to thank, uh, Chad, Charles, Dougie and Bree, the public service, for all the work they are doing and, and our cleanup crews, to clean up the buildings and stuff, they do an excellent job, everything is always ready for us. Every time we come to the council chambers, everything is in good shape. Uh, but we want to thank all them and the public service, like I said, the people that are out going around the county, working on some of these roads. Like we said, we need to continue doing that. And I think we're, it's being noticed, not by just us, but it's being noticed by citizens too. Um, the other issue, uh, the public service area, in the past month, a little over five dog situations in McCall. All of them resolve, resolve good for the dog, which is very important to me, good for the people that own the dogs, and good for our people that have to go, uh, uh, address those issues and stuff. Um, Town McCall's gonna have a fair at the CW Love Park on the fifth, sixth, seventh and eighth of June. It was there, I guess, about a year ago, it's gonna be back again, uh, has some pretty big crowds out there. If you know, but don't know anything about McCall, the other side of going out towards State Line, the last road to the ride is Oak Hill Road. Turn down that road and go down by where the CW Love Park is, and the fair is gonna be there from Thursday through Sunday. Uh, and then again, uh, about the, the baseball, me and Mr. Clyburn have been working, and we had things set up to play some games, uh, today, but the rain sort of put a, a dent in it. But I really intuently want, I mean, we've been talking about this thing for about a month, you know, and we just, uh, we aren't having the games over. We played almost a hundred games, I think, or close to it, that we would have played by this week. And we've only had scheduled three games in McCall and one game in McCo- in Clayo. And that's just not, that's just not, uh, that's just not working. Uh, the citizens of McCall and Clayo, and I guess Wallace too, they have to drive fourteen miles to Lindsay Park, the grandparents and parents to see their kids play. And that's just, that's just not fair, you know? And I know we've had some issues with the fields over there, but they got two fields over, it's in excellent shape now. So through the rest of this month, hopefully, we can play some games in McCall and keep the people from, those, and Clayo too, keep those people from having to drive fourteen miles to see their kids and grandkids play and stuff. That's about it.
I don't have anything.
Don't have anything at this moment.
Uh, I think I can say is, uh, by the end of April, Old White Road opened back up after rabatt. I don't know, how many years it been closed down and.
Six plus.
Six years and, and then I'd say, the state, dear kid guy said it could not be opened up. And, uh, I guess we proved him wrong. It's back, so get, get out of there, it's, uh, don't say you can't, but, but it's open up. I think traffic's usually, safety, I think sheriff department, fire department, ELS, it just makes life easy when you get the address and you don't have to go all the way back around so much, just go ahead and get something.
Ms. Lawson?
I want to personally thank the ladies and everybody who comes to the council meeting. But I also want to publicly commend, uh, the citizens, uh, on April thirtieth for coming out, at least making their voice heard and making sure that we heard them loud and clear, so I do appreciate that. But I also want to ask, um, you, Mr. Clyburn, if you will, let's look at some of our personnel policy. I would, I'm, I'm, I think I've, we talked about one or two as far as political activities and things like that. We need to get some, some other ones and look at it, and we, as a council, decide on that. And then a couple of those ordinance, we need to just really look at some of those, but you, you asked us. So if you put some out there for us and give us some examples of some others, whatever, because I don't want to, I like, I'm taking over that, but if you have some other suggestions, please do that. But I do thank, uh, number one is thank the staff for the delicious meal today. We had some good food today and I do appreciate it, so thank you so ve- very much. And I just want to say I do appreciate the citizens for being involved, uh, commend the citizens for being involved.
You've had a long day, uh, maybe it was being this at one thirty, um, hearing the, uh, press from our department heads, um, and go back to the council meeting. Um, one thing I'd like to, um, talk about, one, one thing I'd like to talk about, the public work staff, they've been doing an excellent job throughout the year. Summit, after the summit, um, before the summit, the public works set their thing up. After the summit, they broke their thing down, they worked long hours doing a rodeo. And we're working long this weekend with the boxer house, um, the great boxer house, and that was the boxer?
What's greatest?
Were great with boxer house, boss by Tony, uh, partner. Uh, so, you know, the public work, they, they do a lot of work, uh, eight hours. Uh, public service, Chad and his team came to Clayo, put up seven foot bags in, uh, in Clayo area, and that was greatly appreciated. Uh, that other man at Clayo and other citizens really appreciate that, uh, what you've done also. We, we, we're in a, a, a difficult time, um, but we all know that nothing don't lie. Mr. Wes, uh, your, your team, your staff, you know, every year, we get you one cut out for you. So, you know, just say nothing to you, just, just take your first go, yeah. So, um, you know, and the thing that, that we all want is, it be the perfect world we in, or never want. But just the world ain't perfect, we even get what we want. And the decision that would be made, we gonna, we gonna take the bullets, you know, but that what we ran for, we ran to be more sort of people. And some of the decisions we gonna make in, in the near future, and it'll be, um, pleasant to the ears. But, um, we can't have our campaign into and, and everything, and so some of the decisions we gonna make, we gotta be firm, we gotta be consistent, and we gotta be on a call as best as we ca- as best as we can. It's easy to, it's agree to disagree. You know, some things I like, DMY, virus, you know, so, uh, it happens where we're gonna be, but we just gotta pretend we're together, not for the twenty-six hours plus citizens in Marlboro County, do the best we can. Mr. Simon, thank you, sir, for all what you're doing to save the benefit. Um, I know your hands full too, you tell, approve your budget, right?
Yes.
We don't, we don't have a role, we don't have a role where you at, I, I know you have the tough decision to make too, so. But, um, with that being said, I got your motion.
Motion.
Second. Motion's seven, I'll be favored to adjourn.